For purposes of the recording of this, this is a regular meeting of the City Council on WPCA. Today is a Monday, May 4th, 2020. It is 6:30 PM. And of course, all the Zoom call and information is already part of the record. So I'll jump into item number one. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'll remind everyone, when you make the motion, state your name and then the motion. So the motion I'm looking for is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 20th.
Waldron, move it.
Second, Wagner.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any vote? And no abstentions? All right, then we're going to move right into item two, which is a review and discussion regarding the proposed city budget for the fiscal period from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. As you'll all recall, back in April, under Governor Lamont's executive order, it was determined that we were going to allow the Board of Finance to proceed with budget adoption and the setting of the mill rate without a public hearing. So what we're doing is, we're moving through this without that hearing. However, we are still trying to schedule joint meetings and setting up opportunities to hear from the public in accordance with Executive Order 7B. So tomorrow night, we have a joint meeting of the Board of Education to review its budget. After our discussion tonight, I'll ask you as to whether or not you would like to also proceed to a joint meeting with the Board of Finance, as we do in every other budget deliberation process. But in the meantime, I wanted to bring you up to date as to where we are right now at level two. And just to tell you how we got to this point. Level two of this budget ordinarily would have been the Budget Subcommittee's recommendation to the council. Budget Subcommittee meetings were commenced in early March. I think March 11th was our first Budget Subcommittee meeting, and we reviewed the Police Department budget. And then the pandemic hit us, and all of the Subcommittee meetings were stayed. In accordance with the Executive Order, there was, you know, clear direction from the Governor's office that it was appropriate to stay all those actions until the council made a determination as to how to proceed. So the budgets really didn't move any from when you received them in February until last week, when we started working on that level two. I met with almost all of our department heads, or directed those department heads that were not within 0.5% increase to bring their budget back at the 2.5%. So what you received with your agenda package, I think it's 48 pages, and on the last page, you'll find that currently, this budget is proposed at $57,859.19. That is a 5.57% increase over last year's budget. I will tell you that the Board of Finance, in the meeting we had last week or the week before, recommended or asked us to bring this budget to them at 2.5%. To get to that 2.5%, I will be looking for additional cuts of $1,690,000. I will tell you that right now, the combined budgets, as they stand between the City and the Board of Education, total $137,800 and change. The Board of Finance alluded to the fact that they have no appetite for a mill rate increase at this time, and honestly, I agree. I think these are extraordinary times and the impact of unemployment and loss of business on our taxpayers can be extraordinary. So with that in mind, what I'm looking at is for the, both the Board of Education and the City, to get to a point where there would be no impact on our mill rate. We would, both departments, would have to look for another $5,455,000 in budget cuts to bring a 2020-2021 budget somewhere around $132,350,000. If we looked at last year's budget, we were at $129,850,462. Our grand list growth, the only new revenues that we have this year, are $2,300,000. So that will, if you want to balance that out or verify the cuts that we would need, that would bring us, the $129,850 plus the $2.3 million would bring us to the $132,350, give or take. I'll talk a little bit about the revenue, because we never talk about revenue this early in the process. We never talk about revenue this early in the process, only because we don't know what the revenues are going to be in an ordinary year. The state of Connecticut, over the last six years, all of the time that I've been doing budget with this council, they're still in session, and their budget isn't adapted until the very end of May or the beginning of June. So we're never in a position to talk about revenues. This year, there has been no legislative session. I don't know if there's going to be a legislative session. They may do a special session. But the only reference revenue numbers that I can assume are the revenue numbers that were provided in Governor Lamont's February 5, 2020 budget proposal. At that point, the state revenues were flat. We were looking at a very modest increase in the municipal car tax grant, which was a little under $90,000. But what we know is with the drop in the stock market and interest rates on savings accounts, we're pretty sure that our investment income, which is always factored into our calculations, will probably reduce that amount, if not show a loss in more than the 90,000. The only other revenues, increase in revenues in that budget was the Alliance District Grant, which is proposed to increase $1,035,185. That grant, however, is just that. It's a grant. It cannot be used in any of our calculations for general fund expenses or revenues, or calculated or factored into any of the mill rate or taxpayer impact. So grand list growth is really the only revenue, additional or new revenue, that we have to use to increase our Board of Education and City budgets. I am reluctant to bring to you, at this point, any recommendations for how I will get to that first bite, which is the $1,690,000, because I am still working on each one of these departments, looking at not only what was put in there for capital, but, you know, what vacancies may appear in each of these budgets, and what other discretionary, it's never discretionary, but what other line items might be less critical to the continuity of operations for the city. But I am going to continue to work on that $1,690,000, so that when we do meet with the Board of Finance, I have something close to what they've asked us to present. And from there, should they require additional reductions, we will we will bring those back to the City Council for approval. Questions or comments?
It's a major task for you. I don't envy you being in this.
I was gonna say, that silence was deafening.
Councilman Cavanaro.
Thank you.
The maybe you inferred this from what you said before, but for my benefit, is the state, do we have some sort of gross calculation with the devastation to the stock market, given the fact the state of Connecticut is so dependent, for so many years, on Fairfield County on income tax and taxes? What that huge stock market hit, how that translates into, in large terms, the budget, in terms of a possible percentage of loss for Connecticut? Is that number floating around anywhere?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? What is it?
Is this, are you getting any indication from the state about how they are factoring the stock market, the huge stock market losses? Okay, since we have, since this state economy for so long, as you, as everybody here well knows, has been built on for so long.
No, I'm not, you know, I did
Property tax, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, not manufacturing. That huge stock market loss was going to have, obviously, a huge rippling effect throughout, and I'm just wondering if the state has even ventured to give some ballpark to local mayors, what that might be, in terms of how that will affect monies available?
No, very honestly, from the state, it's radio silence on their budget right now. I think that they're all hands on deck for the response to the COVID-19 virus. There's certainly been no no indication that there'll be any change to the budget, as it was proposed by the governor on February 5. I did reach out to Representative Cook, maybe about two or three weeks ago, just to see where, what she knew. And at that point, she was only able to confirm that those budget numbers that were presented in February were essentially what we could rely on for now. This is one of those things where I think that we probably really won't get any definitive answers on any of this until after after this economy is opened back up and the governor and legislature can get back into their special session, which would not be until the second week of June.
Yeah, okay. Fine, thank you. Nothing to do with us or at the local level, it's just
Once again.
I suspect those state numbers were built on projections that have, that have all, that have been altered drastically over the last four months. And if they're not even going to give any indication of how we should be thinking about that, then so be it.
Because, yeah, because the revenues that we get from the state really are primarily ECS for the schools, and because Torrington is an Alliance District, the ECS funding was frozen at the 2013 level. So if you were to go back and look at any of those revenue reports that the Board of Education provides, or that we use in any of the Board of Finance calculations, you'll see that it's consistently the same amount of money. That's because, as an Alliance District, your ECS gets frozen at that level. And then any increase in ECS funding is considered the Alliance grant, and that goes into a grant fund and is accounted for separately from the general fund. Other than that, I'm looking at the revenue sheet that was sent to us in February, and the other revenues, you know, are modest. You know, they wouldn't significantly impact the city. It's not, it's not, you know, millions of dollars. It's tens of thousands of dollars here and there, except for where you have a low SIP or a town aid road, which are directly tied to a capital project. So if those funds didn't come through, those capital projects wouldn't be advanced.
Understood.
So
Honestly, that's fine, Mayor. I was just wondering if, given extraordinary circumstances, all cities in Connecticut are operating on there, I was wondering if there was even backdoor channels giving us some gross estimation of where we might land on this. But if not, not. I'm fine. I yield. That's
Yeah.
That's all I needed to know.
Yeah. It's, it's, I feel like it's the same old story. Every year at this time, we're in the same situation. We don't know. We don't know what we don't know. The difference this year is, it isn't like there's a legislative session. It's not like there are, you know, counter-budget proposals being advanced, that we are still playing that, you know, where will this end? This is literally nothing. It's, it's, it's nothing that we can say with any confidence is going to go one way or the other.
Fair enough, thank you.
So Yes.
Tried to raise my hand via the Zoom here, but probably nobody sees the hand raised, but anyway, I do, I do appreciate the direction you're trying to take in terms of reducing it to a point where we will not have any increase in mill rate. I think that goes without, without saying, at this point, with sort of the travesty of our, our local businesses and what that might mean to them. So I appreciate, you know, the work that you're doing along with the Board of Finance, and I, for one, would not support any increase in a mill rate. So I think you probably know that already, but I know you're working towards that, and I appreciate it.
And I reiterate the same thing. I agree with Ann. I think that you're doing beyond what is expected, and I think that any increase is not acceptable at this time.
Other questions or comments on this budget proposal as where it stands as of now? So if there are no questions, I'm not sure what the council's thoughts would be about approving it where it stands now, or holding off and requesting a joint meeting with the Board of Finance. Is that, I'm not sure. If you want to give me some, some direction of what you'd like to see happen next?
Hold off.
Hold off.
Yeah.
Hold off.
All right, so I, Councilman Wagner, or Councilman Waldron suggests that we hold off. So then what you're looking for is a little bit more time for me to go ahead and find those additional cuts, and then a joint meeting with the Board of Finance? Or just
I would think so. I agree.
It makes sense.
I agree.
Joint meeting with the Board of Finance, then, is where everybody wants to be?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I don't need to take a vote on that, especially because there wasn't a motion on the agenda. All right, so then what I'm going to do, going to do next steps is I will reach out to the Board of Finance and to each of you, to see if we can schedule a joint meeting to happen. You know, and oddly enough, despite all of this long period of time where we were staying our budget adoption process, we're really not that far off from where we would have been under any other budget adoption year. I think the Board of Education and this Board of Finance customarily meet, you know, the last week of April, the first week of May. That is exactly what we're doing. So we'll try to get the City Council in perhaps next week or the week after, which is bringing us dangerously close to the May 19th date, where we really want to let them do that mill rate setting. So unless there's any objection to that, I'll, I'll get working on that first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, then let's move into item number three. I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179, to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated May 4, 2020.
Waldron, move three.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Wagner, second.
All right, thank you. I heard Councilwoman Wagner. Any questions in the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the nine tax refunds indicated on the list dated May 4, 2020.
Waldron, move three.
Okay, I heard then Waldron, and then I heard Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion acting here and as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the four sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated May 4, 2020.
Waldron, move five.
Rabino, move second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron and Councilman Rabino. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item six, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Waldron, move six.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Do you have a second?
Wagner, second.
Thank you, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, we're open. So Chief Tawi, I did see, here he is, is here. Chief, do you want to give us an update on status of the emergency operations and
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So, you know, we're well into week eight of full operational response mode. While there are some promising numbers on the statewide level, and, you know, everyone's hopeful that we're sort of getting that point where we're going to start seeing a decline, you know, we still are seeing community spread and a substantial impact in the Torrington area and Torrington specifically. You know, we know where, and we've been monitoring, but we know that the long-term care facilities are all substantially impacted. The healthcare system in general is still holding its own, but is still seeing, you know, those numbers are still sort of holding up there. So I'm hoping that in the coming weeks, we start seeing the decline, you know, hopefully more precipitous. You know, PP still is a concern or a sort of risk point for our responders. We are doing okay, but we are monitoring that closely and trying to source PP in for our emergency response and doing the such. We continue to do outreach to our vulnerable populations and getting any supports that we can to them as we move forward. We know food insecurity is a big concern, and we're, you know, we're actively working to sort of monitor the local food banks and and help get them the supports that they need. And, you know, we will be working on some community initiatives to do food drives to sort of make sure that we keep our local food pantries stocked, to provide support for for those people that are suffering and maybe in situations that they weren't, you know, expecting to be, and sort of support them as they move forward. We are moving, and we have been sort of focused on that long-term recovery component throughout, you know, since early on. But we really are now getting to that point where that's a much higher focus, because we know that those, those actions are coming, and the mayors actively work, making sure to work, doing that outreach to the business community, and try to identify those supports that we can sort of get into our business community and the community at large to hopefully help Torrington come out of this stronger than we went into it. The state has started some mass distributions for some, some local businesses. We did a distribution today that the state's sort of sourcing and taking the orders for those, those masks, and we're sort of the vessel to get them out to the local businesses. And, you know, they're continuing with the economic outreach, going, you know, getting out to the businesses to see, identify those businesses that need support, and hopefully we can sort of give some faith that, you know, the support's there to keep people going.
Thank you, Chief. You know, it occurred to me, I was just trying to look it up. I noticed on Facebook that there is somebody that is out there doing a GoFundMe for for the, for food banks. I always worry in times like this, you know, that I'm sure everybody's intentions are honorable. Is there any way for us to check into any of those things?
Um, I mean, I, we could check with Chief Baldwin. I would say that both Friendly Hands and Community Soup Kitchen, you know, the best way to get the money to them is to donate directly to those, those organizations. I mean, we can try to follow up to, to see what's going on with the GoFundMe phases, sites. You know, I would like to think most people are honorable, and those are all probably good faith efforts to get funding for that desire. You know, we do see a lot of citizens that are doing, you know, local neighborhood food drives, you know, scout troops or whatever, having food dropped off on steps that are then getting down there. But we can follow up and just sort of, and probably with messaging, we should probably encourage, and that's a good point, we should probably be encouraging to just make sure you're taking some time to evaluate the validity of the charities that you're donating to during these emergencies, because while most of them are authentic, we do know that there are situations where people know, use the opportunity to collect funds that may not be going to where you think they are.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. I think Ray Drew is on. Did, is, are you still on, Ray?
Yes, I am, Mayor. I have nothing. Thank you very much.
All right. Actually, I was going to ask you if you don't mind just talking a little bit about how we have started bringing our workforce back into City Hall. Did you want to just share a little bit about that?
Sure, I can do that. So what we've done is, as you're aware, the City Hall and various departments' workforce has been on staggered or alternating schedules. As of today, we brought all the workforce back. Our offices are still closed, but open by appointment only. We stress that, by appointment only. Anybody who wishes to visit the departments, particularly City Hall, to contact the department directly to set up an appointment. What we've done is we've instituted control measures and safety protocols. While in the building, in the common areas, all visitors and staff members are required to wear masks. We are in the process of setting up those offices that have counter-service with barrier screens for visitors. We have posted additional signage. We are continuing to increase our enhanced disinfection of our facilities. And so far, you know, today was the first day. It was pretty good. We still didn't see a lot of visitor traffic, but we did see some in the clerk's office as well as the tax office. But everybody is adhering to the mask protocol. We're moving forward. We'll be looking for the, whatever that next phase, that next transition phase is going to be in regards to actually opening up the building away from all lockdown status.
Thank you, Ray. Dan Farley is on. Dan, did you want to update us on a Treasurer's Office report?
DeMue, Dan, thank you.
Is that good? Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. So we just went out for our second round of bonding. And on April 15th, we had a rating call interview with Standard and Poor's that was done with Alice, the mayor, myself, Bill Lindsey, our municipal advisor, and Sandra Dawson, our bond counsel. We did a lot of preparation to get ready for the inquiry. We went in with initial rating of AA negative, and they came back to us and confirmed our current rating of AA minus with a stable outlook, which I was quite pleased that, you know, with what's going on with the current situation with COVID, and the way that they were discussing situations with us, they had me really nervous that there was a possible downgrade coming forward, but thanks to the preparation by all those involved, I think we were prepared to put our best foot forward. I think they saw that, and I think they saw that and, you know, thanks to the hard work in the city council and everyone else involved, we're able to keep that moving forward. So we went out to bid for $9.7 million. There's going to be six and a half million for roadwork, two and a half for the Bog, Bog Road Bridge, $700,000 for the middle school roof totaling the $9.7 million. We kept the bond issuance under 10 million because that gave us a qualification for what they call a a bank qualified designation. It gave us the opportunity to sell those bonds as tax exempt obligations. So in preparation for the rating interview and the bid process, we actually prepared a 67-page document that best describes the city of Torrington, the progress that we're making in our economic development plans, and the fiscal responsibility that we've undertaken since our last round of bonding. I feel that the hard work and effort that's been put in by the city council and all that has really paid off for us. We had a, our bid opening was held on April 30th and Piper Sandler was the high bidder. And they actually paid us a premium, $505,121.40. So that price is above and beyond the asking price of the $9.7 million that we went out to bid for. I had a discussion, Mayor, I discussed with you today that there was also an underwriter's discount of $82,000. I'm not sure that I have a really good understanding on how that fits in, whether that gets added to that premium or not, but I'll look into that and get some clarity on that as well. We also came, we were able to get the interest rate of 2.01. And I believe, just to reference that, the last round of bonding that we went out for last year, we had an interest rate of 2.4. So that worked in our favor as well. Just on a last note, the day after our bond sale, Moody's came out and they downgraded the state outlook to negative from stable. So I think timing was important and we were fortunate to be on the right end of that, I think. So that's, that's all that I've got, unless anyone has any questions.
Are there any questions from the council members?
No, thank you.
Rabino, very.
Oh, good job, Dan.
Yeah.
Councilman Rabino, very good, Dan. Excellent callback on the stable.
Thank you.
Changed some rates by very much. Good news.
Yep.
We agree. And what Dan didn't say is the benefit of that premium, it could be used one of two ways. It could be used to cover the interest fees. We can apply it towards interest fees on the borrowing over the next, I know for sure it's a year. I thought it was for two years. So essentially, we're borrowing almost $10 million interest-free for a year or two. That's the same thing we did last year. We applied it against the interest charges. So all in all, we were very nervous about going out to bond, watching that market. We joked about it when we first sat down to decide whether this was the time to do it. And it was a little bit of a leap of faith on the timing, but it did, it did work in our favor. So I am, I'm grateful for Dan's leadership on that 67-page official statement. So if there are no other questions, I see that Attorney Michelle is, did you, is there anything for the parishion Council's office?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I see Marty Connor is on. Anything from Land Just you want to share, Marty?
That's actually me, Mayor.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
He's phone?
No, he changed this to his profile picture, so I'll have to put it back. I guess he was looking at himself.
I know, really.
You age with children.
Yeah. All right, is there, are there any other department heads on that I've missed?
Carol Anderson's on.
Yes, Mayor, I'm here, but I have nothing to report tonight as well. You guys look great on Zoom. You're looking so comfortable with this flat one.
Really good. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Is nothing else from department heads? I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
Waldron, move seven.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Rouette, second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll start with, I see Councilwoman Rabino first. Councilman?
Oh, very good. In one of the last meeting, we went over and kind of postponed the situation with the high school. Where do we see that coming down the road as far as any grants are concerned? Are we going to lose anything? Or is it something that we're just not comfortable dealing with right now?
So the day after the last council meeting where there was that e-presentation on proposal for Torrington High School building project, I checked with the superintendent and I felt it was really important for this presentation to come back before the council at a time where it can be done face-to-face, where there's an actual dialogue. I think an e-presentation on Zoom just doesn't, doesn't translate as well or give the, or give the council members and the board an opportunity to really have a dialogue. So my goal is, as soon as we can, you know, loosen up some of these social distancing requirements, get the two boards together. In the meantime, Chief Tawee did reach out through the emergency operations protocol or Command Center protocol to ask if that deadline for the grant application, which is currently June 30th, to see if there was any possibility that there was going to be an extension of that grant's deadline. And Chief, you recall it was sent to us that there was consideration?
Yeah, so I should follow up with that. They are, the reply was that it was under consideration. They haven't followed up if they've actually extended that. So I think the words they said their intent was to, but they hadn't made any final determination. But I can, I'll follow up tomorrow morning and just make sure I haven't missed some.
Yeah.
This is Rabino again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Just, just on continuation of that question, you know, I hear say that some stuff ends on December of this year. Can our legislative bodies see if they can get this December deadlines extended for another year or six months on everything, including school grants and stuff like that?
So the way, the way I understand this works is the grant would have to be submitted by June 30th. And then if the grant is awarded, there would have to be a referendum held before December 30th, and it might even be November 30th. So I think that's the timeline that the Board of Education was anxious to see us fall into. So I, first, I think we really need to find out whether or not that June 30th timeline is extended. And absent any real indication from the state as to when we're going to loosen up some of the social distancing requirements or meeting requirements, the sooner we can sit together to have this dialogue, determine who's on the building committee, because that's another part of this. You know, you need a building committee of city taxpayers, city residents that will help guide this through a proposal, through the grant application, through any public input. So I think that there's much to be done. I'm not saying it can't possibly be done by June 30th, but it's not something that you do on, you know, on an e-meeting or Zoom meeting. I think it warrants pace.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you know, the only other, yeah, the only other thing that I would add to that, Councilman, is, you know, when they, when we hear the medical experts and state leaders talk about this pandemic coming back, you know, circling back in the fall, you know, it also begs the question, you know, are we potentially setting ourselves up at risk to move a referendum in the fall that may perhaps fall again in the middle of a pandemic that requires social distancing? You've seen what happened with primaries being moved. First, it was extended to June, and now I think it's extended to August. So those are things that I think we really have to have some serious conversation about to be very planful because obviously this project can only move forward if the voters approve it.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
After that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to reiterate my point from that meeting. I think the voters will approve this building only if the Board of Education primarily can make the argument that that building, that that very expensive project will be tied to a fundamentally new and appropriate curriculum for our school that is pointed toward the new economy, the new jobs that are out there, and the kinds of flexible educational models that need to be incorporated into that building. A building is a shell. What people in Torrington, what parents in Torrington and what parents considering moving to Torrington want to know is if they put their kids in our Torrington public school system, that they're going to get an education that will prepare their kids for this new economy. The way people work now, and I know this from personal experience, okay, where these kinds of jobs are, is fundamentally different than the way we were raised and educated to think about jobs. And a building, institution has to be configured to allow for a whole host of things that simply cannot be just a new and shinier version of what we have now. So I am waiting to see what our education leaders bring forward in terms of how to think about, not just educational models, but again, how to think about the cost of education going forward, okay? We all know this. Most of us on this council have served on the board. And we have to factor in how are we going to pay for this going forward and, and, and all those questions. And that, to your point, Mayor, no way is that an e-meeting. And quite frankly, you know, that's, that's a long series of meetings in my book, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. Anything else for comments for the good of the order, other than that? For you? Nothing? All right, then, Councilwoman Rouette?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had, I know Chief Baldwin isn't there, but I know Chief Tawee is. With the reopen of Connecticut, what has been the communication either to the chiefs or to you, Mayor, on what is happening with the, you know, with the phase implants, the four stages? I feel like out in the northwest corner, we get sometimes, oh, I don't know, we're not on the highest part of the totem pole, even though we are of great value and an asset to the state. But it has been a very quiet process and I do watch the four o'clock reports, you know, that the governor has done, and I think he's doing a good job. This is not a reflection on that, but the transparency of that information and the inclusiveness of that information or to be a part of the process. I just wondered whether the chief has been, either chief and yourself have had any, you know, direct contact and has been able to contribute at all. Thank you.
So I see the chief is on. Do you want to, you want to talk a little bit about where we are with what's coming through our our information stream through?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we get information through the EOC. It's basically the government's pushouts and the press releases. So we don't have a, I don't have expensive information as far as what the plan is, other than those generic frameworks that have been pushed out. You know, our John Fields, our regional rep, has been great about getting us the information as he, as he gets it. So I think the state EOC is getting us the information as quickly as possible. And we have been staying, trying to stay on top of all the guidance documents, which any, any of this rollout, those guidance documents are going to really be key to provide guidance to the businesses, many of whom, you know, most of whom don't have infectious control backgrounds. So, you know, I know they're working on that guidance. We haven't seen anything specific. You know, Marty Connor is working as part of the Region Five Long-Term Recovery Support Function, but I don't have any, I don't have any specifics for you. I, I understand your sentiments and your concerns. I think everyone on this call probably has similar similar concerns there. I do know as we get the information, we're making sure that the mayor has it and economic development so that we can get that outreach into the business community. And Torrington Area Health has been fabulous as those guidance documents come out through DPH to get those out to us as well.
So, thank you. You know, I've felt we've, there hasn't been an inclusivity of the municipalities or a lot of directives, but, you know, the inclusiveness of this process is so critical because we're so different from one end of the state to the next. So, thank you. And you had reported even chief about, you know, sort of the the number of nursing homes in this area and the confirmed cases of it. I think the governor had indicated it was 55% of the deaths in Connecticut were in the nursing homes. So I am trying to follow it, but I just, I had that question and I appreciate it. And certainly on a local basis, I appreciate all that you're doing. So, thank you.
And as we get those concerns, we are firing up those questions so the state EOC, just so they know that we're here and that we want to be part of that. So, you know, continue to be that squeaky wheel as we have to move it forward.
Squeak away. Thank you.
So, you know, I'm going to add to that, Councilwoman. So last week, I did participate in a webinar. It was put on by CCM and COS. That's the nice thing about these representative advocacy groups is that they are joining forces so that they're, they're getting a bigger bang for their efforts. And Lieutenant Governor Bisowitz, where they were talking about every municipality should be putting together its recovery team. So our economic, since this started, since March 16th, Rista Malaka, our Economic Development Director, and myself and Joanne Ryan from the Chamber have been working pretty consistently on developing what does that recovery plan look like for the city of Torrington? We're right now looking at the data collection process because you, most of you know me. I'm, I feel like every solution has to be data-driven. We have done considerable outreach, including today when CBIA organized a mask distribution to businesses, we seized that opportunity with the help of Chief Tawee to get in front of those businesses that were there to pick up their masks, to present them with a survey that we want them to complete, to tell us directly. We want this to be real-time data specific to Torrington. How has this virus impacted you and your business specifically? So we've developed a survey that we can now email to each one of them. This benefits us in two ways. We now have a direct contact with the business and we're collecting that real-time data that tells us where's the greatest need. You know, is it with, with sustainability for the business going forward? Is it with unemployment and bringing their workforce back? So those are the, those are the ideas of what we're trying to accumulate by way of data. Along those same lines, we're keeping very close tabs on what the Department of Labor has been putting out. I wrote a note to myself here that as I'm looking at those and they're long delayed in processing their unemployment claims. But as of right now, our unemployment in the city of Torrington is ranged somewhere between 11 and 16% versus the 3.5% that we were in going into February. So right away, we know we've got a significant unemployment jump here. The nice thing about what DOL is doing right now is they're also telling us where's the, what industries are presenting with the largest claims. And what we're finding is they're largely the service industries. It's food service. And what we're finding is they're largely the service industries. It's food service. It's obviously hair salons. You know, it's those service-oriented organizations, which are very small. They're mom and pops. They only employ, you know, a couple of people, 10 people. You know, many fewer than 50 people. So, so we're getting that kind of information that'll help us fine tune. What is our response? How do we develop a recovery plan specific to Torrington that's going to highlight and target those industries in particular? The, oddly enough, the other industry that was impacted pretty significantly are the dentists. And when I saw that report come out of DOL, I really wasn't surprised because I can tell you that I have two, I had two dentists call my office a couple of Fridays ago, just so distraught, near tears, in tears, because they just don't see how they're going to recover from this. You know, they have multiple chairs. They had many employees. They weren't getting through to SBA to get the loans that they needed. And there's nothing more heartbreaking than have to talk to somebody who had a very robust, vigorous business that is just pretty much brought to their knees. I also reached out to Owen Quinn at the United Way to look at what is he seeing through the 211 system? What kind of phone calls are they getting? You know, what is the need? Is the need food? Is the need for rent or utilities payments? Are there mental health needs that, that can be provided through any of the various service providers through the United Way? And I honestly, I sent that email to Owen Quinn on Saturday afternoon, and on Monday morning, I had numbers from him. So, again, real-time data that I think is so important for us as a community to look at as we build our own recovery model. I say it all the time. I can't wait for the state to design it for us. You know, we have to, we have to do this for ourselves. So, what I will do is at the next council meeting, I'll ask Rista to join us so she can do a report on what that, you know, what that recovery model will look like. And a piece of that grant that we received not so long ago from the Building Healthy Communities, which had a pretty large component of the, of the economic gardening strategies, which is investing directly in the businesses that currently exist. So, we might have to pivot a little bit from what we originally intended with that grant, not too much. We don't want to go astray from what the intent was when we applied for it. But I think there are maybe opportunities through that $750,000 that can provide some resources to these small businesses, whether it's through technical assistance or direct aid. We don't know, but working on something. So, sorry to be so long-winded. I, I think that's a conversation that deserves a lot of conversation.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's see, I don't want to lose track of where I am. So, Councilwoman Wagner?
Yes. I'm glad Frank brought up the school, the discussion about the school, only because I've had pros and cons conversations with people who think we're all against it, which is so totally not the case. And I think that the public doesn't know enough and we, having it on our, in part of our agenda tonight and in the minutes will be really important. I totally agree. We have no idea what's going to happen with the state. I think waiting to hear with a better presentation would be beneficial. Personally, I know that I've heard some really good things about the progress of education that might help with false concerns with some of our manufacturers being involved and with some other program developments. And, but that's all going to be part of the whole presentation. So, thank you for bringing that up for discussion. One thing, after you were talking about economic development, as the mayor knows, I'm on the Regional Economic Development Commission, Northwest Connecticut Commission, with Rista, with members of the COG and with other business leaders. We had great discussion last week about our concerns for Torrington, as well as our outlying town. We have three goals in the beginning of the year, which have suddenly become more valid than ever. One is that we have discovered that broadband is not coping with children going to school and parents working at home in much of the northwest corner. A second is that the food hub that we created is now expanding to reach out to farmers to bring produce and food to businesses and institutions. Which is a good thing. And the other is that Discover Litchfield Hill site, which originally was more of a tourism focus, is now going to be focusing on getting our local businesses to be part of the discussion, to have them put on there if they are online businesses or they are pickup and delivery, case of restaurants, and try to promote our business as we come out of this for its economic growth. The only other thing I had to add was I know we were discussing very lightly some of the concerns about a solar array being built or considered for the middle school area. I noted right after that, there were articles that Litchfield and Winstead had both been looking at solar arrays and that ONG is already doing a lot in Southbury, as well as their maintenance garage here, which reminded me of a meeting I sat in on a long time ago, a city council meeting where we talked about doing some type of solar array. There was a company interested in the area, I think in the southern part of town near the old landfill. I'm not sure. But we're just thinking that might be a better discussion is to recommend that site instead of the one that people are having an issue with. That was all I had tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Waldron?
Uh, yeah. I'll just report on what us teachers are doing in town here. We're very active. The learning is good and bad, but we're all in Zoom meetings all week. Some students are doing very well with it, some others aren't. Looking forward to, you know, the whole high school expansion and renovation. I think it's going to be a tough sell this year with the economic times and all that. And also, our model of schools could be changing after all. So, I don't, I, like I said, I said, I think it's a tough sell within the next six months till we get out of this whole pandemic.
Well said. I appreciate that. You know, as I'm listening to the discussion about, you know, what does the future of working in education look like, I just wanted to share with you that I had four separate conversations in the last couple of days where people were sharing that the, this teleworking thing, while it was sort of thrust upon us with very little time to prep for it, that there was a large degree of success in this. You know, I had one small business that was looking for a bigger brick and mortar place to expand. He and his workforce were forced to incorporate teleworking in his business model. When I reached out to him, because I was aware of a potential building that may become available, that would be in line with the size he was looking for, I learned that, that he was putting all those plans on hold, not because he wasn't going to continue to expand his business. In fact, it's still very vigorous. But the teleworking has been so successful that he's now going to pivot a little bit to look at how does he incorporate that, you know, for a longer term and, and build on it. What I'm also hearing, and I wish, I wish Councilman Oliver was here to speak a little bit about his experience. But what I am hearing is there is a heightened interest in people from the very urban centers to move into the more rural centers. New York in particular, looking to acquire houses. So, the market, the real estate markets here in Torrington appears to be having a little bit of a surge, and much of those buyers are not Torrington buyers buying Torrington homes, but they're buyers from outside of the state of Connecticut. So, I'm not sure what that will bring. But teleworking is a piece of that story as well. What they recognize is that they can telecommute from Litchfield County and maybe drive into the city less frequently than they would under any other circumstances. So, I am hearing teleworking and distance learning and, and all of those, those technological broadband conversations, I see becoming much more robust over, over the next year or so. So, with that, and let's see if I had anyone else to share anything else with you. I, oh, the Howard's Building, unhappy note. Long empty Howard's Building has been sold. And it's been sold to a local artist, somebody who's been established here on Water Street. And I'm pretty excited about the prospects of what he's going to bring to that building, because he was really bringing a, an arts entertainment, a cross-medium entertainment. It was not just, you know, visual arts, but it was entertainment. It's comedy shows, it's, it's bands, it's poetry. So, kind of a neat concept on Main Street in an underutilized building. I'm excited to see what he may be doing over the next few months. That closing happened a week ago. So, even, again, even though we're in the middle of this pandemic, I'm kind of feeling hopeful that some of these people that were looking to grow their businesses and looking to grow into bigger spaces are actually pursuing that. While I'm on the subject of buildings on Main Street, I will share with you that the property owner of what I will forever call the Libby's Building here on the other side of City Hall Avenue has received approval from the State Historic Preservation Office to move forward with the window replacement. So, the mural that is located on the north wall of that building will be coming down. You will probably see that removed over the, over the coming days. I don't think it's going to be weeks. I think it's days. I am now working with the Cultural Affairs Committee to see what we might be able to pull together to find appropriate storage for the mural and relocation and how they might be able to fund that. So, over the next few days, I'll be working with the committee on that.
Well, Mayor, I just have to, funny thing I heard today about the Howard Building was that there were hundreds of new boxes of shoes that were still there. So, I'm like, oh my God, you know, maybe they have Wegeons and all the shoes that were available from the Howard's. And I don't want to say what year, but
This is Rubino. How about those Converse sneakers that were around years ago? They're probably still in that summer. That's what I mean.
Worth like hundreds of dollars. So, I am, but honestly, that was like some of the best news for, I think, downtown that could have, could have happened during this difficult time. So, you know, I am, I'm just ecstatic. But when I heard about the shoes today, actually from, and I won't mention, one of, the other businesses very close to there had told me that. And I'm like, oh my goodness, I'll buy some.
Yeah. Well, you know, the other, the other interesting thing relic that has survived.
I didn't say relics.
Oh, sorry. You're right. You did not say relics. But there are light fixtures in that building that when they open the doors and you see those, those light fixtures. I have a book here from the 1955 flood, and it shows a picture where the Howard Building doors opened, the water halfway up the walls, and those light fixtures. So, those light fixtures have been there since before the 1955 flood. I, I think it's pretty remarkable. I did have a conversation with, with the owner and said that that was something that I sincerely hoped that he would retain, you know, through, and that's, I think, where he's going to have most of the entertainment. So, I hope they don't obstruct any.
I think he's planning to keep them from what I, the conversations I've had with him. Yeah, I think it's wonderful.
Yeah. So, another important piece of the history of our Main Street. So, that's all that I have for you, unless you have questions for me. If there's no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Waldron, so moved.
Thank you.
Ruette, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. Be safe.
Keep up the good work.
Alright, yeah.